All right, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us for a special work session tonight. We are going to be discussing a local option levy. So, welcome, Happy New Year, everybody, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lyon to lead us up.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. Before I turn it over to Gary, who's going to introduce our presenters, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for the topic at hand. In the fall, we had ANC School Business Consulting do a comprehensive review of our financial department, and they came up with a 13-page document of recommendations. And one of their key recommendations on page four was, "We recommend the board consider a local option levy", which is really an education levy to support the needs of operating schools. So, our consultants made this recommendation that we should consider an education levy to support the operational side of our schools. And they follow up that recommendation with a little bit of commentary, and I just want to read the last part of that recommendation. "With our current budgetary situation, it is most likely staff reductions will be made to reset the budget. Staff recognizes Sherwood parents place a high value on class size. The district should quickly identify the local option levy capacity available to support funding for classroom teachers as the shortfall in general fund is addressed." So, that's where this workshop this evening began. But I do want to just add that it does so much more than restore the situation that we're currently in. An education levy will put us on equal footing with other high-performing school districts in the surrounding area and throughout the state. And so, when we consider this, I want to be very clear to emphasize equal footing. We are one of the only, if not the only, truly high-performing school districts regarding student achievement outcomes and accomplishments that are not supported by a funding source, an education levy. So, that enters into this conversation as we look to the future. It began with a recommendation from our financial consultants, but it quickly, in that conversation about a levy, became so much more for the vibrancy of the Sherwood School District. So, with that, I'll turn it over to our CFO, Gary Bennett, who is going to introduce our speakers this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lyon. Good evening, Chair Hawkins, Board of Directors. Tonight, we're excited to share with you some information about an education levy. And when I say "we," I actually mean Brendan Watkins and Carol Samuels. And for those of you who've been around a while, you may have seen them before. They helped us with our most recent bond project. When we built this building, we rebuilt this building. In fact, they just got a tour of the building. They helped us finance. They did a lot of work for us on that. They do a lot of work in helping us make sense of what's happening with PERS and things like that, and they do a lot of work around local option levies. And one thing that I've always been impressed with, with both Carol and Brendan, is they take really complex subjects, like the one we're covering tonight, and make it understandable for the rest of us. And so, I'm really grateful to you both for coming out here tonight and taking the time to go through this with us. And so, on that note, they'll go through this. You have questions, don't hesitate to ask because it is fairly complex. And they've done a nice job of putting this presentation together. I'm excited to learn with you. Okay. Carol Samuels, Brendan Watkins, thanks again for coming out.
Oh, people are tall. Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Okay, good for... Okay. Hi, I'm Carol. And I say Carol because I want to be on a first-name basis with all of you. I want to keep this informal because, as Gary suggested, of all the financial levies that you may encounter over your board tenure, this is by far the most complicated and also the most perverse in many ways. And it reflects the fact that our property tax system is kind of a mess. And you can quote me on that. It's kind of a mess. But we're going to spend the first half-hour or so looking at your local option levy options. And then Brendan is going to spend a little bit of time giving you a review of your general obligation bonds to kind of bring you up to date on where we see those levies going into the future. So, as I said, want to keep it informal. If you have questions as I go through this, don't hesitate to interrupt me. Say, "Hey, you", raise your hand, whatever works for you, and we'll try and handle it right up front. Any questions before I start? Okay. Well. Hmm. Turning it on might help. There we go. Okay. So, I want to start by talking about mechanics. There we go. So, as I said, local option is complicated in application, but in concept, it's actually fairly simple. It is basically your only option as a means of raising additional funds for operations of significance. I mean, sure, you can have fees for using your gym. You can have bake sales. You can have foundations, et cetera. But if you want a consistent, significant source of funding for classroom activities, this is basically it. It was a creation of one of the property tax measures that was approved way back in 1997, known as Measure 50. And for the most part, everybody uses it, as I said, to put funds into the classroom for operations, to pay teachers, other personnel, et cetera. Theoretically, you could use it for capital. By... The operating side is limited to a five-year levy. So, if you've observed other districts continually going out for a local option vote, like Beaverton, or Tigard, or Lake Oswego, all of whom have local option levies, they're on a five-year renewal cycle because it is limited. You could go to 10 years for capital. That is theoretically an option. However, because local option is perverse and unreliable and can be used in the same way as general obligation bonds and is subject to the same voter test, there is not a single district in Oregon that uses their local option for capital. So, everybody uses it for operations and therefore is on a five-year renewal. It can be levied as a fixed-dollar amount, so you could theoretically go to the voters and say, "We would like to levy a million dollars a year", for example. However, if you say, "We want to levy a million dollars a year", you will absolutely receive less, and there's no upside. You can't collect a million-two in a good tax year. Whereas, if you go with a rate per thousand, say, a dollar per thousand, there is potential upside. So, every district in the state uses it for operations and sets it up as a rate per thousand. And we have a list later on to show you where those rates are and which districts have levies. So, we'll get to that. Because it is an additional tax, you have to get the voters to say yes. There are theoretically four election dates at which you can ask for voter approval. However, only two of them, May and November, are subject to what's called the simple majority test, which is the test that you all probably think of when you think of voting. It's 50% plus one of those who turn out. If you get that, then you have a valid election. The other two elections are subject to an antiquated double-majority test. If you don't know what I'm talking about, the good news is you don't have to as long as you stay with any November or any May. Okay? Everybody with me so far? Oh, did you do that? Okay. So, what can you use it for? Basically, for operations, you can use it for anything that is legally allowable by the state of Oregon. So, you can use it to pay teachers. You can use it to pay counselors. You can use it to pay administrators. You can use it for supplies. Again, there is a capital levy, but it isn't really worth talking about, so I want to move on. Maybe.
Since we're going to move on and not talk about the capital, can you broaden the list, then, on what falls under operations?
Um, I would actually defer to your CFO and your superintendent as to how they would suggest spending funds?
Well, it was a question how we could spend it, like how broadly we could spend it?
I mean, yeah.
Essentially, anything we spend the state school fund on. We could upkeep our fields with it. We could hire an SRO with it. We could buy curriculum and technology with it. We could pay online technology subscriptions by buses, vehicles, tools, security systems. I mean, the list is essentially whatever we can spend our money on legally we can do.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, take a deep breath. All the simple stuff I was talking about before kind of goes out the window. This is where it gets kind of into brain damage territory. Okay, so first, you have to understand a little history about our property tax system. In 1990, voters in Oregon approved the first of two property tax limitation measures. The first one was known as Measure 5. It basically created a system where there were limitations as to what the property tax rate could be in two different categories. The first category was education. That category included K-12, ESTs, and community colleges. That limit was set at $5 per thousand. But here's the key: on real market value of property. Okay? I will explain that, but keep that in mind. $5 per thousand on real market value. The other side of the equation was given $10 as their limit, and that covers cities, counties, park-and-wreck districts, fire districts, et cetera. They were given a higher limit because the notion was that schools would be supported by the state of Oregon in a way that cities, counties, and special districts are not. We were tooling along, and the main incentive behind Measure 5 was that the proponents felt that property taxes in Oregon were too high. However, even though they set limits, property values in the early 90s... I don't know how many of you lived here then. I had just moved here, and I experienced that property values did this. Even with a limit, when you multiply a limited tax rate towards values that are going up, it caused taxes to go up more than the proponents of the next property tax measure felt was legitimate. So, they put together another property tax measure, originally known as Measure 47. In November of 1996, it was approved by the voters. But when the legislature tried to write implementing legislation for Measure 47, they came to the conclusion that it was so poorly drafted that they could not write implementing legislation. So, they drafted a whole new measure, known as Measure 50, that was referred to the voters in May of 1997. That measure was also approved. Here's where it gets kind of brain-damaged-y complex. They did not repeal Measure 5. They layered Measure 50 on top of Measure 5. So, we currently have both measures, and they are very, very different. So, remember, Measure 5 capped property taxes at a rate per thousand based on real market value. Measure 50 created a whole new property tax valuation system where no longer were we looking at market values. We were looking at something called assessed value. Back in 1997, assessed value actually was tied to market value. It was set at 90% of market value back in 1997. But then, it was limited each year to growth of 3% per year. You still have to have market value because Measure 5's limit still exists on real market value. But Measure 50 creates a tax against a lower assessed value that is only allowed to increase by 3% per year. So, we have two different variations of value that we have to keep in mind and that your counties, since you have three, assessors have to track. And here's... Here's the key. Local option has to fit between the two. So, if you have a vast difference between your assessed and your market value, chances are you've got a lot of room for a local option levy. If you have little room, then you may have not a lot of capacity. And the really crazy thing about our system is you don't look district-wide. You have to look at every single individual property because each property has its own relationship between assessed and market. Your homework assignment tonight is to go home and pull out your own property tax statement and see what the relationship is. For me, I live in Portland, in southeast Portland. I was telling Brendan, this year, for the first time, my AV is less than 50% of my market value. Why? Because way back in 1997, you know, it was 90%, but then it grew very slowly. Whereas, my market value went like this. And then in 2008, went like that. But ever since around 2012, it's been doing this. My guess is Sherwood is very, very similar. So, keeping in mind, it has to fit between the two. Now, we can look at how that works for you.
Okay. Can I ask you a quick question, just to clarify? So, when people are trying to wrap their head around understanding this, we are basically looking at, if we were to ask taxpayers for a certain amount of money, we are only asking for that amount of money based on their gap. Correct?
Exactly.
Okay. And they would understand that by looking at their own statement and looking at how much money is in that gap. And then they'd be able to go over however much, you know, if we give a dollar amount of a dollar per thousand, then they could look at their own and say, "Okay, this is what truly it would mean to me."
You got it.
Okay. But that would look different for each person, obviously.
Totally different, and they could be next-door neighbors and pay a different amount.
For sure.
In Sherwood, because my guess is most... First of all, you are a mostly residential community. And the relationship between AV and RMV for residential communities like Sherwood with a fair amount of RMV growth in recent years is likely to create a situation where there's a pretty sizable gap for everybody. Where there's a differentiation is when you have a lot of commercial or industrial properties because those properties get to depreciate their equipment and and their personal property. So, in some cases, with particularly industrial property, you'll see AV continuing to grow at 3%, and RMV declines because they can depreciate.
So, they may have no gap.
Right.
Or a very small gap.
Right.
And I just think that's interesting because I, at least myself, and maybe I'm not the average person, but I've seen that on my tax statement and never wondered why that gap exists or what purpose of that is. So, okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
You are welcome, and you can join the property tax nerd club after this.
Well, it's a very interesting explanation. I mean, I actually enjoy learning about it. Thank you.
Warms my heart. Okay, so way back in 1997, the Constitution granted all jurisdictions the right to local option levies. However, in 1997, the legislature said, "Wait, we don't want school districts to have local option capacity because we have created this whole equalization formula where we're trying to make sure that the have-and-have-not school districts have some arguably lowest common denominator funding." So, they did not allow school districts to go out for a local option levy because they were afraid that Portland and Lake Oswego and West Lynn were going to go and solve all their financial difficulties by getting local voters to supplement. Lots of lobbying for about three years resulted in the legislature finally granting school districts some local option capacity. But it is more constrained than is the case for, say, the city of Sherwood or Washington County. Specifically, by statute, you are limited in your collections of local option taxes to the lowest of three tests. The first test is the... Okay, I'm going to give up on this. The measure... Oops, I didn't mean to do that. Can you go back? The Measure 5 limit, which is what we were just talking about. $5 per thousand on real market value. However, that may not be the smallest number. It could be that your per ADMW test... In fact, this is the case this year for Sherwood. There's also a limit of $22.5102 per ADMW. If that number is smaller than your Measure 5 limit, then that's the amount you can collect. Thank you. Let's see if it works. Thank you, Gary. You might wonder why this is such a weird number. It's because way back in, I want to say, five years ago? 2019, they set the limit at $2,000 per ADMW, but that was allowed to increase every year by 3%. So, that will go up over time. And then the third test that I've never seen for anybody be the lowest number is 25% of state resources. So, for every local option we've looked at for school districts across the state, either the Measure 5 limit or the $22.50 per student is going to generate the lowest number. What happens if you collect more? Well, you can collect more than that, but the access ends up being considered local revenue for purposes of the SSF formula. So, basically, you would send it to the state to distribute to districts elsewhere. Presumably, that's not your goal. So, you want to try and craft a collection that doesn't exceed any of these. There are equalization grants that are theoretically available for low-property-value districts. Guess what? Sherwood doesn't qualify, so let's move on. Yay! All right, so this is a quick visual aid because I'm a visual person. Hopefully, this helps explain it. But this is looking statewide at the difference between real market value and assessed value. And you'll see this goes all the way back to 1982. And up until 1997, there's only one line. That's market value. That's because there was no assessed value until Measure 50 came along. Okay. Thank you, Kristin. I'm good now, right? In 1997, we had a bifurcated system. And you can see assessed value, if you remember, you know, geometry class where they talked about constant slope. There's a reason why this line looks pretty linear. It's because it's allowed to grow at 3% per year unless there's new construction, in which case the new construction can add above it. But it's a pretty straight line. Now, you can see what happened to real market value. And what you'll notice is, yeah, there was an explosion up until 2008. And then there was a crash. And ever since then, we've been growing exponentially. Do I think there may be a reduction coming? That's possible. And the key thing to keep in mind about local option is that it has to fit between these two lines. So, it's not always predictable. And you may have been aware that, oh, about 10 years ago, Tiger Towalatin School District that has had a local option levy, I want to say since 2000, for a long time, experienced a dramatic reduction from one year to the next unexpectedly because of real market value squeezing their cap. Keep in mind that this is statewide, and it looks like, wow, there's vast capacity. And that is certainly true, right? And it looks like, wow, there's vast capacity and that is certainly true right now. But also remember, as I said before, this is a property by property by property analysis. And if you have district wide a vast gap, but a couple of properties that are large that have limited gap, you could see a reduction over the course of the period of time you have the levy outstanding. This is one of the reasons that local option is such an imperfect tool. Because we have seen districts, I wanna say, uh, Tigerd had something like an eight million dollar collection year and then the next year it dropped to four million. So if you go down this path. While the market is pretty hot, you can be pretty sure that your collections will continue and potentially even grow. But you also may wanna be prudent and create a reserve against the potential that, you know, over the course of your five-year levy. You may see a reduction that you're not expecting. Okay? Yeah.
So, um, if I'm reading this correctly, there's in, in twenty twenty, there's an increase in real market value in the home. So there's a greater um disparity between the assessed value and the real market value, right?
Yeah.
And so that would mean that in this, this levy that there would be more and more money received.
Not necessarily, but possibly.
Okay.
And we'll go over an example. I think it, it will be easier to see. But you are going to presumably request a dollar per thousand. That is multiplied times your assessed value. As long as the real market value is higher than the assessed value and you have room for that levy. You can assume that, you know, essentially your collections are going to increase by three percent per year. As long as there's room because your assessed value grows at three percent per year.
Okay, so when looking at this chart. Um, in twenty twenty, when actual funds and family homes were at its lowest. It's possible that the taxes were still increasing. Is that based, correct?
Yes.
So people had less money but were taxed more based on the, if, if the levy was there.
Um. I can't speak to whether they had less money. It is the case, it is the case, if you go back and you look at your own property tax bill. That you will see, all things being equal, each year, your property taxes go up by about three percent per year unless there are new levies that are voted on for say bonds or other jurisdictions' local option levies. But yes, because it's tied to assessed value. And assessed value increases by three percent per year as long as it's less than real market value. You will see a tax increase.
Okay.
Okay.
And just, just to add on to that, and the tax that we're proposing isn't on the whole gap. Not the tax we're proposing, but a local option levy, if you did it, it's not on the whole gap, it's on a portion of the gap. So the only way your tax rate changes is if the real market value shrinks down to the assessed value to wherever that levy rate is set. Does that make sense?
No. Yeah, say that.
So. If the, if you look at this chart in uh twenty twenty-one, you can see that assessed value is roughly five hundred billion dollars. And the real market value is roughly eight hundred and change. So there's a three hundred billion dollar gap in there. Let's just say we were taxing the whole state and we taxed a hundred billion dollars of that four hundred million, three hundred million dollar gap. The stat, the tax rate would stay the same at a hundred million dollars, whatever that rate per thousand would be. Unless the real market value came down to the point where it compresses that. So it doesn't, the tax rate doesn't change. If the, if the real market value continues to rise, that doesn't change people's tax rate, levy tax rate at all. Cause the, it's based on the assessed market value. What it would change is if the real market value drops dramatically. And assessed value kept rising and that pinch between real market value and assessed value, like you see at the end of the great recession there. That's where that happened. I'm having a hard time explaining this, but does that make some sense?
Well, wouldn't if the real market value is increasing faster than three percent increase, wouldn't that increase the?
No.
And no, no.
It would increase the capacity we would have to tax, but it would not increase the tax rate at all.
Okay.
I think I conceptualize it similarly to you. Because, um, and so that's good to get clarity on this because I think you see as the gap gets larger. Your brain thinks, well, then there's, that's more money coming in, right? I mean, that's, that's kind of how it would feel like it sounds. And so, but what you're saying is even though the gap is larger. That's not necessarily the amount that we're taxing. We're taxing a, a portion of the gap, not the entire gap. Correct? So.
That's correct. Otherwise you wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to. You, you wouldn't be able to, be able to count on the resources coming in. If you, if you tax the whole gap.
Yes.
You'll, you'll trip the measure five limit, you'll trip, you'll trip one of those other limits before you can get there and it would be incredibly unstable.
That's what I was thinking initially, that that would be very unstable. So.
That's right.
That's a good clarification. Do you understand what they're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
What, what I would recommend is that we try and get to the example that you've got here in your slides so that, cause I think that that will help. Um, clarify how this will.
But still a good question, cause I mean, I.
Yeah.
It is a good question.
Total common sense at all.
The, the only thing I would add is that it is really easy. Really easy for people to assume, even people like me and Brendan. That with real market value appreciation, your taxes are going up. And nothing could be further from the truth. We are completely decoupled from market value changes. Okay, it does, if market value goes up a lot, it does increase the theoretical capacity. It has nothing to do, as long as you don't go to the voters again and ask for a higher tax rate, it won't affect how your taxpayers pay their tax on local option. Okay. Thank you for the suggestion that we move forward. Um, really quickly to give you. Christine, can you press it one more time? Okay, to give you a sense of how different properties are affected differently. This data is old, but the information is still relevant. This is looking at two different types of properties. A residential home where the AV as a percent of RMV is roughly sixty percent. That's the statewide average today. In the metro area, it's much closer to fifty percent. And again, that's because the assessed value was set back in nineteen ninety-seven. Wherever your market value was, okay? Market value has done what market value will do. So this number has been going down over time as assessed value grows slowly. And real market value does this. On the other hand, commercial properties are allowed to depreciate everything within it. And it's even worse for industrial properties. So what does that mean? It means that the Target store out on twenty-six. Um, is there a Target on twenty-six? No, did I? In any case, um, has an AV that is roughly the same as its RMV. What does that mean? It means if you shove a local option levy in here. Target pays virtually zero. And you may have heard over the years that property taxes have shifted away from businesses to residential properties. This is a perfect example of why. Okay. Moving on. Okay, so in summary. The only way to get to a local option test. If you want an absolute exact calculation of how much you might collect. You have to go down to the property by property by property basis. And you can do that. You can go to Washington County and get the specific information that permeates your property tax bill. You can go to Yam Hill County and Clackamas County and et cetera. And we could give you a very accurate calculation of how much you might raise this year at different dollar amounts. However, because in Sherwood, your AV RMV percentage is pretty low. Our estimate is that you don't need us to do that because you are likely to collect the amount that you are thinking about levying. There will be some properties that pay less than full freight. There will be some compression, but for the most part, you should be in pretty good shape because your properties have such a big gap. Okay, now I wanna look at a numerical analysis. There we go. Can anyone see these numbers? Okay, well then you might wanna look at your handout. Um, and I'm not gonna go over every number, but I wanna give you a flavor of how this works. So apologies in advance for lots and lots of little numbers, but what this spreadsheet does is give you a maximum calculation of what your theoretical top line capacity is. You will not collect that amount. You will absolutely collect less. But if the dollar amount I show you as the maximum is not interesting to you, then we should stop this conversation right now. My sense is you have had multiple conversations about various dollar amounts that would be helpful. And based on that, my sense is you should be able to get there. But let's look at these calculations so you can see how the pieces fit together. At the very top, you will see the current tax rates of the education side of the ledger. Again, under measure five, all education entities are considered on one side. Non-education entities are on the other side, subject to different tax limits. So Sherwood School District currently levies four dollars and eighty-one cents per thousand. The Community College levies twenty-eight cents. The ESD levies fifteen cents. So grand total of five dollars and twenty-five cents, let's round up. And all of you are thinking, wait a minute, that's over five dollars. How could that be, right? That's your reaction, right? Cause that's a normal reaction. But here's the deal. These property tax rates are levied against your assessed value. Which this year is four and a half billion dollars. When you multiply five twenty-five times your assessed value. You get a grand total of twenty-four million dollars. That's how much you are levying in property taxes. The measure five, five dollar limit. Remember way back when I said it was applied against your real market value. Your real market value is nearly twice your assessed value. It's registering just over eight billion dollars. The growth in your market value is eye popping. Just look at where it was the year before, six point seven billion. That's a seventeen percent increase. Incredible. Your assessed value has also been growing robustly because you get three percent. But then you get all the new construction as well, but nowhere near as fast. So when you're determining whether or not you have exceeded the five dollar limit. What you do is you take this five twenty-five and you multiply it times your real market value to figure out what your limit is. And that number is right here. Forty million dollars. So theoretically, again, you are currently levying five and a quarter times your assessed value of four and a half billion. That generates twenty-five million. You have a limit of forty. So even though your levy rate is above five dollars. Because that's against the assessed value base, you are not violating the limit. For most properties. Everybody following? What that means, you have a limit of forty. You're currently levying twenty-four. That gives you a gap of sixteen million dollars. Theoretically, that's your local option constitutional gap. That's huge and it's hugely bigger than it was last year. Last year was eleven million, the year before it was ten million, the year before it was nine million. Way back in two thousand ten, it was six point eight million. And I selected two thousand ten and two thousand eleven to kind of show you what theoretically could happen. Look, the measure five gap in two thousand ten was six point eight million. In two thousand eleven, it was five million. So had you had a local option in two thousand ten and eleven. It is quite possible that you would have had a similar experience to what Tiger Toawalatin and Wesslin Wilsonville went through. So that is just another reason to be mindful about carrying reserves against future valuation changes. But remember that I said that the measure five gap was one of three tests. Well, for maybe the first time, I think it's been close before. Your per student limit per ADMW, that's weird, twenty-two fifty-one oh two times your ADMW is actually a substantially smaller number than your outer measure five limit. So if you actually collected sixteen million dollars. You would have to give four of that back to the state. So you don't wanna do that. So your real capacity is twelve million. Okay, you're not gonna collect that. You're probably not gonna collect half of that. But is four to five million well within the realm of possibility? I'd say absolutely. And if you want a quick rule of thumb. If you take the dollar amount you are considering, say you're considering a dollar per thousand. Keeping the numbers easy. If you multiply that times your AV, which is this four billion dollars. Then divide by a thousand, you'll get roughly what your collection will be. It'll be less than that because some properties, again, do not have full room for a local option tax. But it'll be within the realm of the possible because you have such a big gap. So a dollar times four and a half billion. So a dollar times four and a half billion is $4.5 million. Okay? So far, so good. Um, I think that is everything I wanted to say on this page. Any questions? All right. As promised, here is a list of all the school districts in Oregon that have local option levies. Obviously, they tend to be the more affluent districts in the state, but not always. At the very top of the list is Portland, Lake Oswego, North Clackamas. North Clackamas was the last district to get a new local option levy. They are coming up for their very first renewal. So they may be a good district for you to confer with about how they went about asking their voters to approve the levy the first time. I will say that for every single district that goes for a renewal, with one tiny exception, getting a renewal has been pretty automatic. So Beaverton's renewal was up at the last election in November, and I want to say they passed by 70 or 80%. It is much easier to get a renewal. It's the first time. That's hard. Average levy is around a buck and a half. And it isn't just the wealthiest districts that have levies. You know, Sweet Home has one, Ball City has one. But it does tend to be your neighbors. And as Jeremy was saying, if you want to equalize the playing field between you and Beaverton and Tigerd and Westlin and other high-performing districts, it does stand out that you don't have a local option.
Do you think it's easy to do the renewal because the people paying in see the value and what they're getting from the levy?
I assume so.
Can they tell that? Do they know that those added programs are only available because they're receiving so much extra funding?
I assume so. I mean, to be honest, most districts stick with the same levy rate. There are occasionally situations. Portland had an increase a couple of years ago. I think because the pitch can be, we're not increasing the rate, we're just continuing a maintenance levy to support, you know, high quality in our, in our class. That's an easier message. But, you know, having been a parent volunteer for many, many Portland campaigns, I can tell you that, you know, when you're phone banking, you talk about the extra art teachers and music rooms and other things that, you know, you want as parents, so.
Absolutely.
I have a question. So do we see an increase in outcomes for students when comparing it on extra taxes for the levies?
That is not a question I know the answer to. So I defer to the educators in the room.
So I would imagine, you know, something that was a question is a common question is, well, I want to help the district, but what does this really look like for me? Right? That's going to be the most common question that, that people are going to have. How does this affect my bottom line? How does this really? So you've, you've gone through a lot of calculations and a lot of numbers, and that's been, been very informative and great. Can you, for the people that are listening, give a general example? You had a couple slides up. You had very easy to access your tax statement. If you don't still have it, you can go to the Washington County Taxador website, type in your address and get your tax statement. Couple slides up before you had the real market value and the assessed value. Whether you want to use that or not is up to you. But I'd like to hear if people were to, let's say, pull up their tax statement right now and they were to see, let's say, a real market value of 500 and an assessed value of 300. There's a $200,000 gap there at a 1% rate. Can you walk people what that looks like?
So not precisely.
Generally.
Generally, with a lot of caveats. If you take that dollar and you multiply it times your assessed value and then divide by 1,000, that should give you a rough estimate. However.
So they can take that dollar, multiply it by that assessed value of, let's say, it's 300,000, and.
That would produce a tax bill of approximately $300 per year.
Per year. Thank you.
You're welcome, but I'm going to caveat this by saying that is really rough. And what I'd suggest, if you believe, and I think it's legitimate to believe that that is what your voters are going to want to know, you can put a calculator on your website. And other districts have done this where they can plug in their real market value and their assessed value and the tax rate and get an estimate. Keeping in mind further that that estimate is going to change over the five years because we have multiple variables that may be moving in the same direction or may be moving in a different direction.
I completely understand that. I just wanted to give a general layman's terms, easy way for people to go and say, okay, this is what this could look like for me. No one's ever going to make a decision until they know that. So.
Understood. Okay, um, so I've eaten up a lot of time here and I want to give Brendan some time to go over what your geo bonds look like. So let me just say, in summary, local option taxes are basically the only game in town. If you want to raise additional funds for the operations of the district, this is your choice. Every property is affected differently. So giving you that rough estimate makes me hugely uncomfortable, I have to say, but I appreciate why you want it. When you are talking about this to your neighbors, you also should protect yourselves by hedging and saying every property is different. And that's why you have to go through your own calculation. Also, every year, you're going to collect a different amount. Hopefully, it's a higher amount, but I can't guarantee that. And note, one thing I failed to say, I don't necessarily want to go back. Christine, if you could go back to the table, the big spreadsheet right here. Okay. Look at the fact that you are now at the ADMW limit, right? What happened to your ADMW last year? It went down. Okay? The rate per ADMW goes up at 3% per year, but if your enrollment continues to decline, the amount you will be authorized to collect without running into the limit is going to go down. So that's something else to be aware of in your assessment of your ability to have a stable funding source. This source can be unpredictable. But because Sherwood is in a really good position relative to your gap size, my sense is that you are more likely to have a predictable five years at least relative to other districts that we deal with that have many more industrial and commercial properties. So with that, unless there are questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Brendan. All good? Okay.
Oh, here's your coffee. Well, thank you. And I want to give a quick thanks to Carol because she kind of went over, I feel like, all the hard parts with geo bonds, which is the property tax side. I feel like the actual borrowing debt side is pretty simple comparatively. Because as you guys have just gotten a crash course in the Oregon property tax system, it's particularly Byzantine and overly complex. So I think, oh, thanks, Christine. So real quickly, I am here to talk about the district's geo bonds. The general obligation bonds are the bonds that you might be familiar with that are voted on by taxpayers in the district. The district itself most recently went back to the voters. I think it was November 2016. So some of you might be familiar with that, if any of you were involved in that process. But for any of you who's not familiar, or even if you were involved in that process and maybe need some freshening up, here to help with that. So first things first, bonds, it's just a fancy term for loan. It's just a loan that's just been broken up into little parts and sold to a bunch of fancy people in suits. Tend to be fancy people in suits. So geo bonds specifically, though, are bonds that are backed by the property taxes as voted on by the voters within the district and also the district's full faith and credit. That's kind of a fancy way of saying the cash and your general fund also backs up the property taxpayers. Hopefully, though, it never comes to that. And because of that, the debt service is repaid by, I wish it was in there, an additional property tax levy. That's kind of the key with those voter-approved bonds. It's an additional levy above and beyond that permanent levy. And all the stuff that Carol talked about earlier with Measures Five and Fifty, geo bonds kind of exist outside of that. And so they don't get compressed by that same $5 limit that Carol was talking about earlier, in case anyone was wondering. So one of the other important things about geo bonds are because they're backed by the voter approval of the district, they tend to have the highest credit quality that you'll find out there. Other than US Treasury bonds themselves, voter-approved geo bonds are probably about as good a quality debt you're going to find out there anywhere on the planet. Sorry for editorializing maybe a little too much, but that's just based on kind of what we see from credit spreads in the actual market. The other important thing about geo bonds, and this isn't true for all geo bonds, but it's really true for all your geo bonds, which is that they are tax exempt. Now, the nice thing about tax exempt status is that allows the borrowers to not have to pay taxes on those interest earnings, which means they're willing to give you a little bit lower rate, which means you and your taxpayers get to pay a little bit lower rate than if those were taxable interest rates. So those are kind of the main characteristics of the district's geo bonds. So let's go to the next page, Christine. And so this is a little itemization. Sorry for the wall of text. I know Carol and I aren't always the best of this, but we just have a lot of tables and there's a lot of information and we just want to make sure everyone sees it. So this is a history of the district's geo bonds going all the way back to 1994. But the key things you need to know right now is the only bonds that are currently outstanding is a refinancing of the 2007 geo bonds. And then the two series of bonds that were sold in 2017 and 18 that were approved by the voters in 2016. And so we can go on to the next page. And also, I should just say, even though Carol, Gary already mentioned it, please interrupt if you guys have questions. I realize I can also talk kind of fast, so I don't want to make sure I just kind of barrel through everything. So the next part of the kind of geo bond cake that gets baked into the levy picture is the property tax system. And Carol already talked a lot about this, but this is your kind of first look at the actual itemized history for the district itself. We just kind of showed you top level RMV and total AV for 2023. But main thing I want to point out on this slide is actually the two growth columns that you'll see second in from the left and furthest on the right. So you'll see the RMV growth column and the AV growth column. And I want to highlight that to highlight Carol's earlier points about that gap. That is where that gap is created in its most raw form is the difference between those two growth rate numbers. You'll see RMV for the district. While you have some fluctuations down there where it went negative post the Great Recession, you're mostly seeing wild growth rates. I grew up in Tigerd, by the way, so I've like kind of seen Sherwood grow up over the years from the 80s till now, and I'm still impressed by how quickly you guys have grown. And if you go all the way over to the net AV growth rate, now remember, that is capped at 3% for organic growth. So anything above 3% means new construction. Most places, when they have a lot of new construction, you're seeing, I don't know, three and three quarters, four and a half percent year over year. You guys have averaged, you know, glory, like over 5% for the last five, six years, seven years. Like, that's pretty mind-boggling. And what that means is your guys' tax base, which you're able to assess on for both, whether you're talking local option levies or general obligation bonds, is quite large and growing very quickly. I don't think I have anything else I want to mention on this slide, but there's quite a few numbers on there. But if you guys have any questions about any of them, again, feel free to interrupt. So we go to the next one, Christine. Thanks. So now I want to kind of smash those two previous tables together and show you what they mean for the taxpayers within the district. So I am taking the outstanding bonds, which are the, again, the refinancing that we did in 2015 and then the 2017 and 2018 geo bonds that were, again, part of that same 2016 authorization. And you'll see that total column, that is the aggregate debt service for all those series of bonds right there. And then it is divided by that total assessed value there. There's a little wonkiness because, again, the Oregon property tax structure, it's Byzantine, it's opaque, it's confusing.
Brendan, one thing, just to clarify, the column in the total is what we pay each year.
Yes.
On those, correct?
Correct, correct. And it, it's a, it doesn't represent the actual specific dollar amount assessed. What Gary does is he'll take that total number and then he'll gross up a little bit for that. You'll see a taxes-collected column I have there that is an assumed, an assumption of uncollected taxes every year. And so it's kind of grossed up a little bit. But generally speaking, that number right there in that total column, that is the debt service levy for the district's taxpayers. Yes, thank you. Yeah, blue line is this year's. The little gray is all historical. So those are actual numbers. Everything below that, other than the debt service, which those are locked in, everything else is a projection. And so that's kind of key because that total AV growth projection, you'll see what we're using for the district is just that 3% organic AV growth cap. We, when we structured the bonds for the district back in, or I should say, we were first contemplating the structures for the bonds back in 2016. We were using higher growth rate assumptions, but we've, we specifically kind of feathered those back down to the, to the organic growth average or cap of 3%, and that's continued. That's been our continued assumption so far. But as you can see, our AV growth assumptions, even when we, you know, have used higher ones in the past, I don't think we've ever assumed higher than 4% per year for the district. And you guys have consistently exceeded that. Oh, and I guess one way to also visualize this is if you look at the projected bond rate on the far right. When we were first selling the bonds, our goal was to keep that at $4.20. And really, though, hoping that $4 was actually what we were going to get to, we're at 344 this year. So again, that's the power of compounding growth on your assessed value over these years. It has dropped our projected bond levy for taxpayers by almost 70, 80 cents over what we thought it was going to do. And again, we knew we were being conservative, but still, I thought $4 would be a reasonable number and we're nearly 50 cents below that, which is great for your taxpayers. So then we go to the next slide because I am also a visual person and I also like colors. And so this is a. And so this is a graphical representation of that previous slide. And what we're showing here is what those debt service numbers translate into actual levy rates for your taxpayers. Now, what our goal is with really any tax rate and kind of going to Carol's point earlier about local option levies being easier to secure when you already have one because you're asking for a continuation. We tend to see that similar with geo bond levies where taxpayers, it's not so much that they don't want to pay more in taxes or less in taxes. They tend to not like to see their taxes seesaw around or your sawtooth around. And so the goal is to kind of keep this levelized structure here. But what you'll notice, we intentionally created a levy step for future bonding capacity. It's not a very big step, but it's a step nonetheless for the district. It starts in, that lines up with fiscal twenty thirty. So that would be for a November twenty eight election would be sort of that next projected new capacity for the district. Of course, you guys can go sooner than that, that's just where, when we were working with the district back in twenty sixteen, where we decided to kind of put in that step for future bonding. I think that's all I have for that slide.
Brendan.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Can I go back to that? Because I, help me with a little translation on this, it's.
Yes.
So when the Sherwood School District went out for the geo bonds to build a high school and do the work. There was a tax rate projected to the voters. And you're saying that in translation, in reality, due to the growth, the tax rate that was given to the voters at that time and approved is actually eighty cents per one thousand less than what the district.
I think it's more like seventy-three cents, but yeah, yeah.
So seventy-three cents less per one thousand that's being collected is seventy-three cents less than what the school district said the tax rate would be.
Correct.
And.
Or projected, yeah.
Projected.
Yeah.
Projected, right.
Yeah.
And it's all about projections. And help me with the math, the seventy-three cents per one thousand that is under what we projected equates to an amount on a, to use Krista's example of a three hundred thousand dollar assessed value home. What is that in terms of a quote unquote savings on a tax bill?
That would be about two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Less per year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're coming in significantly lower than what we projected to the voters in two thousand sixteen currently. Based on the growth and the rise in real market values. And I think that's important to kind of translate that into kind of that, because it helps me understand where we currently are.
Yeah, and I know certainly like there's, not everyone likes to do it this way, but I feel like there's been more of a shift for districts to look at their rates holistically. Like not just the bucket permanent bond, local option, look at it. No, this is what our taxpayers pay because, you know, money's fungible, it, you know, it's all green. So whether they're being taxed for local option levy or geo bond, it's all spends the same. And so, yeah, like the idea of thinking about how while they maybe don't have a direct relationship to the taxpayer, they do. And so treating them as such, I, I don't know, Carol, tell me if I'm wrong, but I feel like that's anecdotally what I feel like I've seen. Do you want to come up here?
Sorry, what, what I would focus on visually is you see this downward slope. So the dark colors are your historic actual levy rates. It's not a coincidence that the highest rate was right after you sold the first increment of bonds from two thousand and sixteen's authorization. The fact that it has gone down every single year is a reflection of exactly what Brendan was saying. That your growth has been so explosive that that growth has worked to the benefit of your taxpayers in a way you didn't project. The fact that it's now down here and that we project it's going to go back up is in part because we are once again being conservative and assuming that you're only going to have three percent growth into the future. If you continue to have six, seven percent growth, this rate is also going to be lower. Okay?
Yeah, to add to Carol's point, I don't want to be overly aggressive here, but if I had to bet what your next year's levy is going to be, it's going to be closer, I think, to the gray bar in twenty twenty-three than what I'm showing that purple bar is right there. Just knowing how conservative our assumptions are.
And I'd like to also point out that that, that drop that you see from twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen is the result of a decision that the board made at that time to take advantage of very low interest rates and refinance, which was not an insubstantial savings. And had we not approved the bonds in twenty sixteen, that number would have continued to decline. Because the savings were so significant from what we paid in the twenty-seven, twenty, or two thousand seven, two thousand eight bonds that were used to build Archer and, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're around the school. But now feel like they've been there a long time, but it's, it's pretty amazing. But the ability that the, the focus on growth and the, the board in twenty sixteen, when they put this together was specifically thinking about how do we enable growth to help pay for these investments that we've made in our future. And so it's really a relief to see that that, that has come to pass, that that strategy is working and it's working to the benefit of, of our taxpayers.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's working better than I think any of us even hoped it could, to be honest. Yeah, I think that's all I have, Christine. Yeah, there's our contact information. Of course, you know, Gary has it as well, Jim, I think as well. So if you guys have any questions after the meeting.
I just, I, not, not of you, but I, I do want to go back to a question that very, very fair that Carol was not in a position to answer about what the impact on investment is on student outcomes. And I think I, I really would love for, for Gary or Marlene to be able to weigh in on this, but if you feel comfortable. But I, I mean, I just, from my experience and kind of looking at how that goes, it, it all depends on how those funds are invested. But for example, Beaverton, they went out for, it was a dollar and a quarter. And several years ago, it saved over a hundred teaching positions. And I think if you think about, what does that look like if you lose a hundred teachers, even in a school district the size of Beaverton? The difference in educational quality and one-on-one time with students. We know the most important factor when we look at educational outcome is the teacher in front of the classroom. And so not having those hundred teachers makes a huge difference. So it's, I think it's about where you choose to make those investments. And, and how those play out, but I, I'd be really interested in Gary and Marlene. And we've seen big differences since we've been able to make investments in mental health and other curriculum investments that they have driven educational quality in this district. But I, I'd really like to hear them respond to that.
Sorry. So there's, it's, it's hard to be able to sit here and measure like education outcomes in terms of like a test score or a number or something along those lines. I would tend to think of it more in terms of programs, in terms of protecting the programs we have to start with. Making sure we keep all these great elective programs, band programs, CDE programs, engineering, all the things that we offer to kids that are so powerful. And then be able to expand and build upon those because we are, in all honesty, partway done with a build out of having like a K twelve STEM program. For example, I know parents love this, the K five STEM program we've started and building out a pathway that runs basic skills there, elective opportunities in middle school that let kids know if they're interested in that and then feed into opportunities at the high school to go deeper with some of those areas. And, and so that is, that is an example of some of the types of work that we could do with this bond. So it's partially about the, the outcomes in terms of a number and things like that. But it's also for me, an outcome of opportunities, public, private partnerships, working to build those out, those take human power to be able to, to operate it. There, somebody has to coordinate that and do that work and set up students with internships and all. And it's things like that that become a possibility. What we invest in, that's a different, bigger conversation that we'll have to engage in. But when I think about it, that's some of how I would.
But let me add also that there is plenty of research related to class size. There is plenty of research that, that connects the ability of a teacher to have a manageable class size, to know every child by name and need, and to deliver a high quality educational program. When the larger the class size, which is a variable that is the most important variable, in my opinion, and to protect and preserve to the greatest extent possible. As a teacher and as a school administrator, class size matters. And as an organization where eighty-two percent of our funds go to paying for staff to, to keep those class sizes as low as possible. If we start giving away class size, we start eroding the educational model of the Sherwood School District. So there are copious studies that look at class sizes related to educational outcomes. And, and I think we need to focus on that because a value that our parents clearly express daily is class size. And that is what is at stake here by and large with this local option levy.
Are there any other questions this evening, Jeff?
I mean, I certainly have a lot of questions, but I, I don't know if now's the time or we have another, do we have another meeting? To discuss it?
We always have another meeting, but if you have a question that you think they could address, then you're welcome to ask them and see if you can get your question answered correctly.
I, I guess, um, there's, I, I hear Dr. Lyon about the preservation of, of class size. I guess, and I'm speaking out loud just so I can get feedback on my thoughts. And that is, one, one of the things that was brought up was a lot of the other school districts, there's kind of this automatic renewal of these levies. And one of the hypotheses was, well, it's not an extra tax, we're just going to maintain it. But what actual benefit is this maintaining? I, I hear you that right now in our situation, we have a unique situation because I, I see this personally as a preservation of a lot of class size, and that will directly relate to students' outcome. I, I, I don't, I'm not doubting that. What I'm concerned about is five years from now, when we fall into a pattern of, we're just going to renew this just because. I want to see that we can demonstrate to our voters that there's, there is actual outcome in our students. We have great marks every single year in student for Sherwood. And so I want to see, well, how can we, if, if we're taxing, if we're adding more taxes to our community and people are paying for it, what are the students actually getting out of this five years from now? When we are out of this hole, when we're out of the, the, the challenges that we're in right now. And that's really what I'm, I'm thinking through right now.
Let, let me give you an example that I think might help. I was talking to the high school principal the other day. They get over one thousand requests a year from students to take the culinary arts class. We have one teacher and this great facility. Think what we could do if we had greater capacity, not what we could do, but what the outcomes for students would be if we had a one hundred percent increase in the involvement in our culinary arts program. Everything from future careers to pathways to knowing how to cook at home. So I, I think about it in terms of what do, what do those program expansion opportunities look like for student outcomes? And the kind of outcomes that our parents want, we all want for the next generation of students. It's, it's exciting to think about where you can go when you have capacity with an extraordinary educational system like Sherwood.
If, if I could, because I, I think that's a very important question that you've just asked. That, you know, is it, is this an automatic conversation? Does this start us down a path of automatic renewal? And I, having worked on the two general obligation bonds, the two thousand six bond and then the two thousand or the twenty sixteen bond, I can tell you in neither of those conversations was this, it, those don't auto renew in the same way or, or can renew. You have to go out and you have to make the case, and the same is true for a levy. It is true that it's easier to reauthorize a levy, but I, the thing that I've appreciated about this board and that I've appreciated about this community is the need to not only prove that you could spend the dollars, as you said you did, to bring the project in on time, under budget. But that it's actually produced the outcomes that, that were promised by the district. And I think in order to, to go out and even, i- if we get to a place where we make a local option and education levy ask of the community, there's going to need to be some promises to the community about what it is that we would preserve, what it is that we would invest in. And then I, I think a really strong oversight focus on how do we make sure that we've delivered those promises? Not just the dollars were spent in the way that we said we would spend them, but that they produce the outcomes that we promised would be produced. We did that as part of the capital bond, we had an oversight committee, including contractors who weren't part of the construction itself and other community members who watched every step of the way and independently reported on, are we delivering? I think it's worth considering whether we do something similar here. How we audit those resources to make sure that they're being delivered in the way that we promised. And, you know, then it's up to that next board in four, five years to make that decision. Do we, do we go and ask again? And by then, the public will have had the opportunity to see pretty clearly, did we deliver? Did we get results? Do we have that conversation or not? And I think, you know, if there's, if, if the district doesn't deliver, I, I won't, I won't be on this board once it's, once it's implemented. But I can tell you, I will be watching closely and providing feedback on whether I, I think that those investments, which, you know, if, if it, if this is the team implementing those investments, I am confident in their ability to produce those outcomes that, that we're going to promise. Because this is not a team that over promises and under delivers. But if, if that's not the case, it'll, this board will still, will have to make that decision. Do you, do you go ask the community again or not? And this community has never been shy about saying no when they disagree.
I was just going to say though, too, to your point, I don't think it's honestly even just for this team to answer that question. Because I feel like it's this team, right? Like it's our job, all of our job to make sure that money is spent in a way that provides more opportunity. It's not really just their job to produce that. I mean, it is our job if we decide to go after this to say, we are going to show the people in this community what we have done with this money and all the extra opportunity that we are able to provide your students. So I take that heavily, you know, I mean, I want to make sure that is something that we are very invested in and that we are listening to the community and our teachers and hearing what they want to provide. And I think that for you too, I mean, that's something that you'll have to decide if this is something that you want to support, that you are responsible for wanting to oversee that and provide that. I mean, that's ultimately one of our jobs. Right?
Yeah. Two more questions.
Go ahead.
So the other one was, they mentioned a calculator on the website that maybe so like voters could kind of understand what they're, what, how it applies to them directly. Is that something that can be implemented? Is, okay, already seen that heads nodding real fast, so, okay. And then the second thing is, we, we, I recognize that our district is not one that, we don't have a levy, but all the surrounding ones are nearly also all the surrounding ones do. How, with the surrounding districts, what, what kind of bonds and how many bonds do they have as well as a comparison to our district? Are, are we low on that or are we comparable to the districts around us?
By bonds, are you specifically referring to the general obligation?
By bonds, are you specifically referring to the general obligation bonds for capital expenditures? Uh, that is something that I personally don't know. I mean, I know an anecdotally Newburgh Pass one recently was not to the, um, same amount that we did. Ours was two hundred and forty-seven and a half million for the most recent set. Uh, theirs was something less than that. I'd have to do a bit of research to find that information for you. Okay.
You're basically just wanting to know though, as a community, are we asking our taxpayers for much more than local neighborhoods?
Yeah, yeah. So we're, we're, you know, for, I just want to, the taxpayers and myself, since I understand, you know, we are looking at this levy, but also we are also already paying on several bonds.
Sure.
And so what are, what, how's that compared to the other districts around us?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question.
I think you're going to have people asking in general, is this a way just to bail the district out of this financial crisis? As, as a means to an end solely? I think it's a perfect storm that the coincidence is that we can do both. We can see the district out of the financial crisis, but then we can add value to the district going forward. And I think that's what we have to make clear to the community is that maybe it was just a perfect storm of opportunity at this point. No one wanted to see this happen. But we also don't need to work harder necessarily for the same outcome financially, where we can have more of a reserve and more fiscal reserves. So we're not scrambling every year by not using a levy that everyone else around us uses. So.
It's a really great point, Harmony. And I, I also want to just kind of note, um, I think this was really implied, but I, I really, really want to be clear for folks that are watching tonight. These are dollars that wholly get to stay here. Um, Sherwood had a high property tax rate when measure five went in and measure five, in addition to all of the other things that it did, it froze rates that you paid for education in place and then allowed them that growth opportunity. Um, if you paid a lot in property taxes when measure five happened, they helped. If you didn't, and there are some districts that twenty-seven cents per thousand, thirty-five cents per thousand. Um, we are subsidizing them. That is just this flat, it's not fair. The property tax system in this state is the furthest thing from fair. It is super complicated and super unfair. And the unfortunate thing is that a lot of those dollars that we pay out do not stay here. They go elsewhere. Um, either through K-12 state school fund going elsewhere, us not getting what we pay back. Um, all of that being really, really frustrating and leading to a lot of amazing work that happens through the Sherwood Education Foundation, through the band boosters, through the sports boosters and so many others to make opportunities happen for these kids. This levy, um, could be an opportunity for us to invest in ourselves, for the dollars to stay here and benefit Sherwood entirely and not have to be shared elsewhere. Um, and so I just, I really wanted to make that clear that a local option levy is an opportunity for us to invest in ourselves and for the dollars to stay in the community, doing good work for our kids. Um, and not, not having to share elsewhere. Not that we don't like to share, but, um, we really like to invest in our own kids and community.
Um, yeah, I just, to piggyback on what Dr. Lyon touched on about, you know, the opportunity, um, yes, we have found ourselves in a really unfortunate situation. Um, but one thing that I, I don't want, um, and I'm saying this because I've heard it. Um, I, I would hate for people to make decisions about the future of the Sherwood School District based on things that happened prior to many of the people sitting up here. Um, either being here or beyond, that was beyond their control. Um, what we're talking about is student success. And what we're talking about is the future of the Sherwood School District, not the past, but the future. We're talking about the wellbeing of our students. Um, one of the school districts that I saw on the list of the bond was North Clackamas. I just got done hearing about uh, from my nephew, an amazing expanded CTE program that they have over there. Um, where he was telling me about all of his friends that are going into engineering or, um, you know, electricians, they're taking career paths that are in very, very high demand. Um, that they normally wouldn't have been exposed to if they didn't have those opportunities in that district. We have the ability to be competitive with that. We have the ability through a levy like this to, um, stand out. You know, people, it's no secret that people come to Sherwood for the Sherwood School District. I came to Sherwood for the school, Sherwood School District. Um, and this, the opportunity for this levy goes as, you know, we're constantly hearing from the community about opportunities that they want for their students or how they want to see the fields better or, um, how they want smaller class sizes. Something like this could do everything from maintaining the teachers that we have to adding teachers on and programs on for the benefit of our students, um, to something like lights on the baseball field that our beautiful stadium doesn't have. Um, there's so many opportunities here and I really appreciate the sentiment that that Jessica just shared with keeping things local. It is beyond frustrating the amount of taxes that we pay. That don't stay here. It is so frustrating. Um, but that's not something that's within my control. Um, and what is within my control is the decisions I make for my community and my kids and my district. And so just to touch, um, basically on what everybody said here and what opportunities does it provide and what's the outcome and, um, you know, I, I feel strongly about this. I'm just going to be frank about it. Um, because I see that I just envisioned this amazing things happening through it. And I, I'm going to come back to, um, yeah, this really bad thing happened. It's, that's again, that, that hasn't gone away. This isn't making that go away. There, that, that's still under investigation. There's still, that's still being dealt with, that's still being worked through. This is about the future of Sherwood School District and the potential that it could have. And I just want to make sure that I made that clear and said that from my course that I'm sitting on, I suppose. Anyway, I'm done.
Okay. Well, will this presentation be made available on our website? Do you know?
Yes, it can be.
Okay. I think it'd be helpful. I know there's a lot of numbers in here, but I think, you know, for me, it was actually quite easy to follow along with what you guys had to say, watching this presentation. So I think for people at home who truly do want to understand and listen, it would be helpful if they could hear the conversation as well as see what's on here. Um, do we have any other questions this evening or are we wrapped up for tonight? Okay. Thank you guys so much for coming and educating us. It's a lot of information and you guys did a very good job of making sure it was clear. I felt like it was very understandable and I, I think everybody else up here felt the same way. Am I correct? Okay. All right. Our next meeting of the board will be held on January eighteenth. This meeting is adjourned.